Is that right?
Uh huh. Oh, no. Switched around here. Thank you. You got it, Bill. Right side of the room.
I thought I was being awful.
You are.
We'll open the formal session of the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners for July 14, 2016. It is 10:01. McKayley, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I should mention at this point that Commissioner Primisic is not joining us today because he is dealing with some BLM issues in southern Oregon, and he's going to hopefully have a good report when he comes back. This is the time we have set aside for invocation, and this morning, joining us to do an invocation is Father Steve Rogers. He is the priest at St. Barnabas Episcopal Church in McMinnville. He is also a psychotherapist in private practice, works at the Cedar Hill Hospital in Portland, which is a psychiatric addiction hospital, and he's worked also, as he mentions, with the wonderful people at Yamhill County Mental Health. He's written a book on the soul, a murder thriller, and is about to publish a book on addiction with a doctor at the hospital, and he's been kind enough to come and pray with us this morning. Father Rogers?
Let us pray. Almighty God, we give thanks for these wonderful people who serve you, who serve this community and the people of it. Help them in their discernment, decision-making. If they seek justice and peace, compassion, grant them wisdom in the ordering of their lives and of the lives of this wonderful county and all the great resources it has, the natural and evil. We ask all this of God's sake. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father. I just want to say thank you for all the wonderful work that's done at St. Barnabas. Long before people were focusing on homeless issues, the work that's been done there in feeding the homeless has been exemplary. So, thank you. And thank you for the work that you're doing with our county mental health, and your resume is impressive.
Well, thank you.
So, thanks for coming to join us today. We appreciate it. Okay, thank you very much. All right. Next, we have a public comment period, which is set aside for public comment on any topic other than quasi-judicial land use matter or other topics scheduled for public hearing, unless extended by the chair or majority of the board. It's limited to three minutes per person. Doesn't look like we have anybody here for that. So, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there any last-minute changes in the consent agenda that you'd speak about?
Yeah. Wanted to ask if you could remove from the consent agenda and consider under other business items B1A, B1G, B1I, and B1K. These are certain of the contract amendments adjusting health and human services provider rates.
Christian, could you read those again, please?
Sure. B1A, G, I, and K, and then also item number B6, and address that as part of other business as well. And I can explain a little more about the need for that when we get to that point.
Okay. So, I would move approval of the consent agenda, except for B1A, G, I, and K, and B6.
So, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus those items to be considered under other business. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye passes unanimously. I'd like to, at this point, in part of the consent agenda, we approved the grant requests for economic development strategic investment grant programs, and this is a program that we're very proud of. And as a result of the lottery dollars, we're able to take those dollars and distribute them within the community to growing businesses who will then add jobs and expand. And we've had some really exemplary applications this go-around, and we're hoping that this just encourages other people to do the same as far as growing their business. The first was an award for Anvil Academy. And Anvil Academy is a really fun kind of organization because they have a heart for teaching industrial skills like blacksmithing and leatherworking and metalworking and, actually, stagecoach building to young people who might not fit into the traditional mold of going to college. And so, we're grateful for that because they're a startup in Newburgh, and they're going to be teaching classes both for adults and for youth in those industrial arts. So, we're glad that they're going to be teaching the soft skills, and these skills to students also are going to be adding jobs. The next is Ferum Technology Corporation, and this is a corporation that has currently set up shop in Bun Village, and they have done a wonderful job getting contracts with large kitchen manufacturers. And they've got plans to expand and to move into another area in the city that they're expanding, and we're going to be hiring from their projections 21 people over the course of three years. What's really exciting about this Ferum Technology, which is a metal injection molding company, is that they produce kitchen knives and have a contract for that, but also, you know, they've got state-of-the-art technology, and that is something where they're going to be able to add a number of really well-paying jobs to the community. So, as part of continuing to grow Yamhill County, this is another exciting chapter in that. Next is Flag &amp; Wire Coffee Company, which is really poised to take over the gourmet artisan coffee market in a big way, stepping up with wholesale accounts, corporate accounts, retail accounts, and they're over here in the Granary District. And so, while they started out retail, they've grown very slowly but very wisely, and we were able to help them with a grant to buy some equipment and to help them in the next steps in hiring more people. Next, we have Artisan Winery Supply, which is going to be connecting valley wineries with technologies that exist internationally that we've never had access to before. So, with the connections and with the background this particular company brings, it's going to be a game changer in terms of economic, not only economic development, but the environmental impact that these technologies can help reduce is significant. So, as we continue to grow Yamhill County, we continue to be able to disperse these dollars, and this program is growing by leaps and bounds. So, at this point, I think we should be thanking Jane Mercer, who is our Grants and Special Projects Coordinator, for really ferreting out the business plans and all of the minutia that requires vetting in order for us to do diligence to give this money out. So, really excited to be able to do that. All righty. Next, we have old business, we have none. Under D, other business, we've had a couple of the items pulled off the consent agenda. Christian, did you want to address item B1 through K?
Yeah. 1A, G, I, and K. Those are contract employee agreements. The amendments that we received actually contained a provision regarding compliance with tax laws that were not required in those amendments. We didn't have time to change the documents in your packet, so I just wanted to let you know that I've gone ahead and lined out those provisions, and that's reflected in the documents that you have before you, but it did remove that piece from those amendments, and I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention in case there were any questions about that. The language that was added is a result of some legislative changes that were made in 2015. It's language that needs to be included, and that's the issue we'll address in item 6 in Tom O'Connor's contract. It needed to be added there. It's language that further clarifies that when we have an agreement with a contractor or a vendor, we get further assurances from them that they have complied with specific Oregon tax law requirements. Circling back, it wasn't necessary in those four contract employee agreements, so the language has been removed from those, and the change that was made to item number 6 is I went ahead and added that language to Tom O'Connor's contract.
So, entertain a motion to approve item under other business, item B1 with those changes, and item B6.
I would move for approval of B1 and B6 after the explanation from Christian.
Motion to approve item B1 and 6. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye passes unanimously. Under other business, item D1, which is a consideration of a notice to intent to award to Yamhill Carlton School-based Center project, Health Center project to Alana Bailey in the amount of $55,239. And this was an RFP, correct?
Correct. HHS conducted this RFP. There were two proposals received. This was the most responsive and responsible proposal. HHS has asked that we move this forward. The next step in the process would be the board to authorize the notice of intent to award. That then triggers the seven-day protest period, after which we could move forward with a contract.
All righty. So, entertain a motion to approve item D1.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve item D1. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye passes unanimously. Item E, public hearings, we have none. Announcements? We have any announcements? Okay, all right. If nothing else for the good of the order, we will thank you, Dave Adams, for being here at McMinnville when we had our joint work session, and appreciate you setting up and covering all of these. Takes a lot of work, but thank you for doing that. Appreciate that. All right. Then we'll close our formal session for July 14 at 10:14.